Okay, so we have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order uh four thirty seven. And the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. For October eight.
Cindy.
Cindy, it was motion?
Yep, I was second.
All in favor approving the agenda? Oh, yes. Does the public have any input on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, um all in favor of approving the agenda as submitted. Motion carries unanimously. Item three, public input. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, and provide other information to the commission that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The commission may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the commission may uniformly impose time limits of three minutes to each individual presentation. Public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the commission takes up each specific agenda item. Does the public have any input at this time? Public? Would you like to introduce yourself? Hi Lori, welcome to the meeting.
Kelly Costa. Nice to meet you.
Okay, thanks. So um. No other public input, we'll move on to item four, which is to review and approve the agenda, uh minutes from the September tenth meeting. Um which are attached to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Can I approve them even though I wasn't here? I was not um in attendance to that meeting, but. Okay, but I did read through them and seemed like what normal kind of discussion from past. So I'll approve them minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion and is there a second Cindy, since you prepared the minutes?
I know, I'm kinda going.
That's like, uh, it's kind of a weird duck.
I, I second.
Okay, all in favor? Public have any comment on the minutes included in the package? Okay, so all in favor. I. Unanimous minutes. Uh moving up to item five, retail cannabis ordinance. Um. Darcy was on that committee and she is not here yet, but also there's a discussion item. Uh for the city of Eureka meeting to later tonight where they um someone has um. Requested another dispensary permit for uh building that they have. So that'll be, maybe there'll be some interesting comments at that.
Yeah, I was um hoping that we could kind of track that discussion too and just see what Eureka is seeing. I think they'll have some comments from their planners just on kind of. Um is there saturation of the market? Does that really matter if a business is willing to um you know, make that investment? Um does the city really have a role in in you know, second guessing that? I'm not sure. So it will be interesting to kind of see what. Uh what their staff comes up with and kind of um get a feel for kind of where the market's going.
Does the public have any comments on a retail cannabis ordinance? Yes, Lori. If you like.
I think it's on already.
It's on, okay. Uh my name is Lori Ponte. Um I live here in Blue Lake, Eleventh Street. Um I think from the beginning, I was sort of um probably on record somewhere. Uh stadium that I really felt that a cannabis retail. Business isn't the best for Blue Lake. Um we have, we don't have essentials. And um I was, you know, talking to a couple of my kids and they're like, you know cannabis is is kind of like. You know, alcohol, it's it's a, it's kind of more of a luxury. It's it's sort of um discretionary money that you can spend. A lot of people here. Don't have transportation, they have issues with being able to get out. And so bringing in, um I I mean, I understand the desperation for income. And um and retail business. It just seems that um because of our size, because we have a school so close by to everything. Which is considered the downtown. That um and then the potential development of the um opportunity zone, which would be for families and recreation. Um I think that if people wanted to bring their own substances in and partake in appropriate areas, that's one thing. To actually have a retail business that um for the, the only reason that we really really want it is because of income. Is probably not the strongest argument for it. So I, you know, I just kind of wanted to share that when I saw this item on your. Minutes, um because I I have three grandkids or two grandkids, I should say, two. Um and they were born here, they go to school here, you know, there's lots of kids here. We have a great ballpark. Skating rink. Um I I think it just isn't an element that would fit. And I don't know that, I mean, there is a lot of of cannabis and uh. Dispensaries around, there's quite a few in your Arcata, which is the closest. Um so you know, unless we have a different kind of transportation system, which gets people back and forth to to um. To get what they need, I don't know that it's really a strong argument for. Seriously looking at adding a cannabis retail business in. It I just don't, I just don't see it. You know, we have a nice little coffee shop. We have a a bar that we've had forever, which is great for people who like to go there. We have a doghouse. You know, we have things that we're able to get trucks to come in, but you know, unless there's a mobile cannabis uh thing that comes in for events. I I just don't see how it's a really good fit for Blue Lake. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the cannabis ordinance at this time?
I haven't read the ordinance.
We had a sample from the city of Weed at one point, because we were aiming to have a very restrictive ordinance. And this wouldn't be necessarily opening a place, it would be just changing the rules so that they don't prohibit somebody from doing this. Yes.
Not, it's not easily a a Blue Lake. City-owned business, but you change. The ordinance and you know, if someone says, hey, you you're saying it's okay, I should be able to do this. You couldn't take that back. You know, so if even if there's, it's a long pause on. The discussion, I mean, I I understand the the need of revenue. It's huge and um I just don't think that that is. The revenue stream that we're gonna, I mean, you know, there there are a lot of people here who. Um can't afford much. Um you know, rent is high and you know, we don't have a place to go out to eat. Uh on a regular basis, you go to our our food trucks that come in and and that's great for events, but it's not something that's sustainable on a daily basis.
Okay, well, thank you.
I think if you put it out there, you can't take it back.
That's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
But do we have a, did you say wait there that there was a sample of the ordinance?
Yeah, so um when council originally started to look into this, um the the idea came forward. Um you know, because the the city precludes any type of retail commercial cannabis. Um when we, when we went down that road um early on, it was, you know, really focused on, we didn't really want to. Move into the arena of production cultivation. Um we wanted to. You know, we just didn't really have the resources necessary to be able to make that investment, um to even take something like that on to for consideration. So. Um the council had always said, you know, in the future, if you know, things change, or if there was something more on like a retail side. Uh you know, maybe it was, you know, like a, like say Blue Heron, a botanical shop that maybe carried um you know. Salves or products, then that could be something that could be considered at a later date. Um but at that time, we just kind of took a hard, hard no on the whole thing. And then it got brought brought to council um several months ago to, you know, maybe it's time to reconsider that. Um knowing that the market is pretty saturated and there's probably not a ton of interest. But in the event that there was interest for someone to come forward who had a business plan and was willing to make the investment, just like any other type of business. Should the city preclude that from happening? Um I don't see that we have, you know, a, there's definitely not a lot of people knocking on our door to do this, but you know, you just. You never know. I mean, I'm honestly, I was surprised to see, you know, I, it surprises me to see dispensaries still popping up. And you know, Arcata and Eureka and stuff. And so, you know, things are kind of ebbing and flowing and things are, you know, markets are kind of equalizing. So I'm not sure what direction that takes. So council asked the EDC to um to kind of kick the idea over to this um commission. To do some research, do a little outreach, see how other cities are um, you know, dealing with the situation. Are they seeing this as something that's been helpful, or what are the problems associated with it, especially the smaller communities? Um you know, Ria Del and um you know, Fortuna, people, you know, cities that are starting to, you know, see these um dispensaries come in. Like have there been problems? Are they, you know, are there things that the city could learn from them so we don't make, you know, uh the same mistakes? If the if the council were to decide to go down this road. Um so uh Roxanne and um and Darcy. They're on the ad hoc for this. And then our city attorney provided a sample ordinance from the city of Weed, who also kind of took this. A similar approach to kind of what the city was looking at, like a very um narrow market approach, um limited number of permits. Um they have a very small community as well. Um and so he felt that it was kind of an or a good starting point to kind of see how you could. Kind of box it in and also build in some, you know, um you know, some hard breaks, you know, to deal with concerns. So that's where it's kind of been the last couple of months is just, you know, kind of, you guys have done some outreach. Um I think um Roxanne, you know, in her role with uh Redec also has, you know, more exposure to some of the local businesses. And you know, just kind of seeing how things are going. So um we haven't really picked up a ton of traction on it. And I think probably maybe this winter um council will want to revisit, you know, kind of get a recommendation from the EDC and then. Decide what they want to do next. But I can get you a copy of that ordinance too, so you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
As someone who manages commercial here locally.
Right. Yeah, I think the idea is just um.
I mean, I've been, it's it's been asked a number of times to, you know, to be sure not to rent to anyone. Like I was like, you can't anyway.
Yeah.
And um but it is, it's can be a precarious situation.
It can be problematic for landlords. I mean, these are businesses that are not eligible for federal funding.
Right, yeah.
At this yet, I guess, maybe they're relaxing.
Yeah.
Even with the prohibition modified, it would still be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think.
So but I would like to see, and then do you know, did you guys um he has, have you ever heard how? The city of Weed has done with their ordinance and their policy?
Oh, I was just thinking that would be an interesting thing to do is just to follow up and see how it's working as far as regulating the market. Or if they've had any interest or any takers in that.
Right, right. Because the town is condensed to a small space and.
Yeah.
You know, the placement of it could be concerning and. Um. Uh you know, as you could put the ordinance in and then they not find anybody to rent space to them.
Right.
Or a place to buy, that kind of thing, but for the right price, anything could happen. Um so it's, but it definitely feels like it should be very sought out as far as how tight the ordinance. Can be, should be and um. Because you look in Eureka and they're on every other block. It's really crazy.
Just as many of his food, there are food trucks hopping up like mushrooms.
And you wonder how they're all sustaining and surviving and people are working there and things like that. But um we definitely, I would not first like to foresee that that would be here for sure. But there's empty spaces here that people could pop into and. Look at Walmart in the middle of Eureka where there's not supposed to be a Walmart.
Right.
Well, and I actually think that one of the mistakes that Eureka did was they did a bunch of rezoning. And made them cannabis areas and in that, some businesses were kicked out of. Where they were renting because. And you know, it's just that part. We need to focus on our businesses and make sure that we don't forget the ones that have been here all these years. And. If they can all live in harmony, that's great, but we should not not forget. Our ongoing businesses because when the cannabis bust, it's already starting.
Oh, we're well into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, still some stupid money out there, but it's drying up fast.
Well, that's why I think we have problems with the county budget. Um I think there was a lot of emphasis put on. That was gonna be the the Green New Deal or whatever you want to call it, so.
Build the coffers.
Yeah.
Yeah, the tax, yeah.
And it didn't really work very well.
Yeah, and I think that you could. Yeah, and you could look at um you know, the like the, what the planning commission's looking at tonight in Eureka is. You know, a fairly large um store that's got cultivation and sales and a lot of things built in. Um you know, I think more what was being discussed for Blue Lake, would it be more like the little um, you know, kind of. Botanical shop that's not necessarily, there's no cultivation, there's no processing, but if it's. You know, tinctures or you know, different things that are more just uh retail products and not. So not solely a hundred percent just a dispensary, but could it, could there be some type of hybrid that, you know, allows. Certain types of products. And I don't know how that gets regulated, um or if it can be.
Can't walk into a dispensary until you show your ID and make sure you're of of. Correct age.
Yeah.
So a combination of like, you know, a retail space where they spell sell. Lip bombs and bath stuff that are not cannabis related would eliminate a lot of customers. And I, that doesn't seem like a viable. It's not, at least not here yet.
And like, you know, like I said, I'm, the city is definitely not out looking for these types of businesses. But in the event someone came forward and had a business plan and a model and the investment capacity. Um would the city? Why would the city say no at that point if there was some, you know, so I think that's more like.
Sure.
Do we just say no altogether, or do we let the market, you know, kind of bear some too, so um.
And I think the other thing as far as like finding out from the city of Weed. The oversight from the city, are they, how well do they monitor to make sure that that dispensary is. Meeting all the requirements by the state.
Right.
And um because there's quite a process to get your product into those and testing and and things and.
Absolutely.
Who's gonna oversee that and?
I think the state oversees.
The state oversees, the city doesn't have any.
The state oversees its regulations. We would just have an overlay that has them the opportunity to get a business license and operate.
And I think there's diff, you know, the, at the beginning, there were different entry points for the cities. And that was one of the things like with the track and trace, you know, some of the cities did get in on the oversight. And it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to get into that and staffing and regulatory stuff. And that was one of the things that immediately I recommended the the city just not even consider it. Because just the track and trace stuff alone was hundreds of thousands of dollars, like.
Lots of manpower.
And you know, there was no way that we could.
The taxpayer expense.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know. I think the laws are gonna be changing. I think there's going to be some hybridization of retail at some point soon. Um so it may be something that the city just wants to keep, you know, their.
It may not matter with full legalization anyway. It may just kind of be in.
Absolutely. I mean, you're already starting to see a lot of crossover products everywhere, you know, whether it's just CBD products. Or you know, I mean, you go to Murphy's and right at the checkout aisles, you know, different CBD products and you know, drinks. And I mean, I use CBD stuff on like my elbow and you know, and you're like, okay, and you're starting to just see more of it come into the market. So you know, I think at some point, some of that's gonna get relaxed even more for some of that product line, so. I don't know. It'll be interesting. Like I said, it's, it's not something that the city, it's not on my radar for economic development. Um but like I said, it is something that I don't know that we would want to say no if, if someone did come in with a good plan. I don't know. And someone wants to make their own investment like any other business. I think that was just the, you know, the mindset was why would we treat them like any other business? Um if they're willing to, you know, take a risk.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll discuss this again at the next meeting and have some more information.
Great.
Uh moving on to item six, vacant commercial property assessment ordinance discussion.
Yeah, so you, um so we've been kind of following this a little bit the last couple of meetings. Um I brought this back to council or to the commission. Um this had been something that had been brought up at the council, uh you know, I think well over a year ago. And then the commission, we had discussed this too. Um what, what do we do to incentivize um? People cleaning up their vacant buildings, especially their commercial spaces. Um knowing that, you know, the city has a severe lack of commercial space. And some of the largest um and most um frontal properties that we do have are in, you know, a pretty. Um uh. Forward state of decline and need of repair. Um and and what incentive is there for a property owner to make those investments if, um you know, if. If the money's not there, if a property is so far in decline that, you know, it financially, it's not feasible to make those investments anymore. Um but what does that do to the city and to the city's downtown? And was it, what does it do to the neighboring businesses that are also trying to make it? And you know, loss of um space, um you know, the the overall aesthetics. Um public health and safety issues associated with declining buildings. Um and then just kind of a loss of vibrancy and capacity to, you know, um. Create more of a condensed atmosphere of economic um vitality when you have, have these large vacant properties. Um so the city of Eureka recently passed a new ordinance and, you know, it went back and forth. It was a little contentious. They worked with um some of the real estate um representatives, some of the bigger um real estate managers. They were, you know, talked with property owners. Um I think their ordinance is a, goes a little bit further than probably what the city um would, would want to focus on. Um you know, they have a lot of issues with vacant buildings because they don't have tenants. Um ours isn't. I don't think our need is really uh that we have vacant buildings for a lack of tenants. I think we have vacant buildings for lack of. Um capacity for those buildings to be viable um tenant spaces. Um so I want to just kind of keep it on the radar to to keep this conversation moving forward. We did talk about um the last time possibly going and touring a couple of these buildings. To kind of get a feel for, you know, what the current state is, um what the um. Like what some of the needs might be and what could be some starting points.
Is the carbon plant still listed for sale?
It is, and actually I'm gonna be doing a walkthrough with their um property manager next week. We've been in constant contact for the last three years. Um working to try and transition that property. Um they're very motivated to demolish that property, get it cleaned up and hopefully. Um you know, turn it over to a new property owner. Um there's a lot of interest in that property. It's also zoned opportunity. Um our problem has been trying to get the next phase of um environmental assessment on it. It needs a phase two environmental. Just to be able to clear the hurdles for financing um and acquisition. Um the city has been talking with Calgon about um acquiring the property. Um and then the city would then be able to turn around and either um sell the property or work with a developer.
Have you held it in some sort of, um is there a way to to avoid taking on the liability from ownership? With the potential for environmental contamination?
So that's the problem. So the concern with the property by the property managers right now is that there could be a low level contamination.
If there's need a phase two, something could surface and need.
We, there, over the years, there's been multiple environmentals, there's documentation, the, it's, it was part of the whole Macintosh Mill um site. And so that site has been um, you know, studied up one side and down the other. All the properties down there have the same levels of. Um exposure and they're pretty low level. Um we are pretty confident that any low level exposure. Or contamination on the site could easily be remediated. Um the property owners, however, are a little bit more conservative and just are concerned. Um because most people who do want to develop the property want to do mixed use, so they would like to do some form of housing with it. So um looking at a multi-story um development with commercial retail on the bottom and two stories of um apartment space. Um there's been talks, a couple of proposals to have rooftop patios and you know, maybe a restaurant space on the top floor. Cause it's got probably the most beautiful view of anywhere in Blue Lake. Um so there's, there's a high level of interest in developing the property, which I think could be amazing. And um you know, really could clean up a nuisance property. But that's also what concerns the property owner is, you know, if there is exposure through residential use, does that? Does that provide some type of legacy um responsibility for them? And so that's what we're working with them to try and alleviate. Um the city could take on that property. Um and we could apply for a brownfield grant to clean it up. Um it's really small. It would not be. Um it wouldn't be a problem at all. Um we've already talked to the county through their brownfield program and and there's resources available. We could also, um the city could also be um released from liability by working with a developer. Who would then assume the liability and remediate the problem through construction. It happens all the time. Um there's, you know, properties all over Humboldt County that get redeveloped that maybe had a um, an underground um gas tank. Or uh maybe it was a machine shop or you know, there was a leaking um logging truck that parked there for years. So and those are the types of contamination levels that we're really um talking about. So pretty, pretty minor, but we do have a walkthrough. Next week, um they're gonna be bringing out a crew to look at the demolition. Um getting the site demoed is probably like a real critical first step because it's a real nuisance property. Um it continually gets vandalized and you know, there's concerns about, you know, uh potential fire situations, you know. And they, they're just tired of managing it. Um it's just a lot of headaches, so.
How long has it been vacant now? It's more than ten years.
It's been, yeah. Yeah, it's been a decade or more, so. Um but yeah, so there's good conversations. I think that's probably the most developable site. Um we are, you know, looking at folding that into a larger scale master plan. Um so that as these properties start to be looked at for different uses. We really want to look at how they can all be integrated so that we start looking at um connectivity as far as ingress egress. Um shared parking, trails, uh facility usage, um you know, uh landscaping. Um a whole host of things. So you know, the property next to Calgon, um B and B. And then Tom's property at Wallace and Hines, and then you have the city's property, the old power plant. You know, as those properties start to be looked at differently, you know, they all start to really connect nicely to create a much larger district. That could have a lot of really nice value, um especially from a recreation standpoint. So being able to go down to the river and you know, come back and ride your bike through the district and you know, having trails that connect people to space. Um you know, there's, there's a huge opportunity there if it's, you know, if it's done thoughtfully. And so that's kind of um, kind of what we're looking at. So so Calgon, I think, is um definitely a property that we've been working on um continuously. Um I did have a conversation with the owners of Stardos this week. Um they're again interested in possibly leasing that space. Out to someone to do food, so um. So you know, we've, we've worked with them over the years, trying to, you know, kind of help provide support as we could. Um at one point, the city was um going to provide a a, a small business loan. Um to help them make the repairs. I think that's still an option. Um you know, getting that space activated and producing food again would be huge for the city and huge for the community and the surrounding businesses. Um and would give the owners, you know, some revenue coming in um where they haven't had any for quite a while. Um the, the building does need, you know, some interior work. Uh and one of the, the areas that we, you know, that we kind of recommended was, you know, working with a tenant. Um letting them do tenant improvements in lieu of lease payments. You know, maybe that's for six to eight months.
The health department would, it would have to be re-permitted as a food, a restaurant facility.
I, so. So I'm hoping that they can focus on pizza again. I think pizza is um probably the low hanging fruit. It's got the beautiful pizza oven and pizza is more of a limited prep type of business. So you don't need hoods and you don't need, you know, all of these um, you know, major improvements. You need.
Just need a few sinks.
A few sinks, stainless steel counter, um.
The walls have to be treated, the floors.
Which is pretty minimal in comparison to what you have to do for a full prep kitchen.
Yeah, it's hard to imagine that being a full prep kitchen.
But uh pizza could do great. Um so I have made some calls. I'm trying to get ahold of Bill. Um you know, with Loan Slow too, cause he was really interested. And then he also had bought Blue Lake Pizza. So when he lost his space um at the brewery, you know, we lost two businesses. So that was really kind of a big hit to the city. Um so we're trying to kind of figure out how to bring that back in. And it may be that maybe Bill would be interested in selling Blake Pizza to someone else locally that wants to do it, you know, as he's trying to. Um you know, keep his. that wants to do it, you know, as he's trying to, you know, keep his business going. And I know he's doing a lot of catering and things right now. But I think that's, like I said, that's kind of that low hanging fruit. You could do pizza, maybe deli sandwiches, salads, kind of that minimal prep type kitchen that, you know, would be a huge value to the community. You could still do ice cream, you know, and another ice cream shop would be great there. I think the community needs an ice cream shop. I've been following, you know, Lolita with Jersey Scoop and seeing how amazing, you know, that little business is doing and just.
They even created ten jobs in that little space and built a manufacturing facility from scratch.
Yeah, absolutely. And look what it's done to the town. Like, just the energy of, you know, of Thomas and, you know, those guys coming in has been amazing for Lolita, you know, and it, what a community building opportunity. And so I think, you know, something like that could be really valuable for Blue Lake as well.
Like an ice cream place here.
We do. We've all, yeah, we've been reaching out to them.
And I, I finally had the opportunity to try the ice cream. They have it at Eureka Natural. Others.
Yeah.
Like that.
Yeah, they've done a great job. And they're really good with their marketing. You know, they've got their tiny farmer, their little guy that just, I mean, every day they're pumping out Instagram and everything. And God, it's just such a feel-good business. And, you know, I mean, they're amazing, both of those guys. And their family is amazing. So.
And I want to try their, they have beef that they.
Yeah, yeah. And they do deliver to Blue Lake too. Yeah. So, yeah, they're, they're great. So.
Where footage is in the Stardos?
You know, I am not sure. I think it's probably maybe six hundred plus. Definitely under a thousand. It needs a new ceiling. I think it needs some flooring repair. There needs to be some work to the pizza oven. There was something about it having more of a porous surface. And I'm not sure what that was about and whether it can be sealed somehow or there's other, like, applications, maybe, you know, that could be adhered to it so that, you know, maybe it's stainless, it's covered in stainless steel or something. I don't know. But I, so I'm working with Jenny Lee, the, the mom of the kids. They're not kids now, they're adults. But, so, so that's good. There's a conversation going. And we did, you know, when Honeycomb started, the city gave them a $10,000 loan to get started. And, you know, we did the sidewalk improvements and everything to help facilitate that and worked with Kelly and, and Ross on making those improvements. And that was great. And Kiko paid off that loan and, which was awesome. And, yeah, she, she made all of her payments and extra payments and paid it off early. And, you know, we're just super proud of, you know, all of her hard work. And, you know, she's got a great product. We wish she was open more. But, you know, she's, she's doing, she's still there. So I think that's a testament to, you know, to her, her product and, and just how she does. Yeah, absolutely. So that's exciting. So, you know, that's a way that the city can, you know, kind of help in small ways. You know, we don't have a lot of money, but, you know, there's ways that we can.
Has Jenny connected with the Small Business Development Center?
You know, originally we did. We did have her connected. We, we did a lot of outreach with them. We were very close to signing a loan agreement with them as well. We had gone through and got all the estimates and and then it just kind of fell, it kind of fell off the radar a bit. There was a lot of stuff going on with, you know, the estate and the kids were younger at the time too. And there was a lot of thought that maybe they wanted to open a restaurant themselves and but I think they're kind of realizing, you know, as they've, you know, grown their own lives and have had children, that, you know, maybe it'd be better just to have that passive income versus not having anything at all. So that's why I'm kind of hoping, you know, that the city, you know, will lend as much support as we can and make as many connections. There's always.
Fair bit of money put into that, that's ace to make it functional.
It, yeah, and I think someone who is maybe has some, some skills or some friends with some skills and is willing to make, do the sweat equity in lieu of lease payments, you know, that can go a long ways. You know, I look at the transformation of the logger, you know, that was a lot of community support. I know there would be community support here. And because it's a smaller space, I think it's manageable. So. You know, the other spaces that we have, the, the glass blowing shop, it's possible that that, I had heard someone mention that they were thinking about putting it on the market. They've been doing a lot of cleanup. I've been working, you know, keeping in contact with Angela. She's, her and her partner have been hauling out truckloads of stuff to the dump. They've been doing a really good job, you know, just trying to clean up where they can. And they've made a lot of progress. So I really appreciate that continuing to move forward. And it may be that they're going to be putting it on the market. So that'll be something else that we'll be, you know, kind of tracking. And then, of course, there's the Emporium Building. And that, that building, our building official is working with the property owners for various health and safety code issues. But as far as improvements to that building, you know, there's, I think there's probably a, a pretty substantial amount of investment that would need to be made. But, you know, that's another one. It's a large footprint. It's a historical building. It's very frontal to the downtown from whichever way you, you know, if you're going towards the river, back from the river, just around the block, you know, you're, you're, it's very, it's very frontal. So that's a property that's, that's really important for the city to consider the impacts too. So I think from, you know, from my standpoint, you know, I think this is, I, I think this is a really good tool. And I think it's something that the city really needs to consider. I don't think it's.
What kind of staff time would be so, would be, would this tape require to administer something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we have a building official who works one day a week. You know, there, there's not a lot of properties. This is a known quantity.
This could get mired in litigation.
Well, we already have some responsibility under our nuisance ordinance already and for health and safety code violations. So the city can't abrogate its responsibility because we don't want to, you know, put up the funds. We try and be as proactive as we can so that we don't get to that point. I mean, I've got properties that I'm working with consistently where I literally go up and be like, hey, come on, you guys, like, just at least move it off the sidewalk, get this cleaned up, you know, because the next step really is going through a nuisance abatement process. And that is lengthy and it's very expensive. And ultimately, the city pays to clean it up. And then we wait to see if the property ever sells or there's anything to recoup our money. So it's not, it's not in the best interest of the city. So we try and be as proactive as we can. But at some point, you get properties that you, you need a little bit extra. You need another tool to be able to utilize. And I like the idea of, you know, we talked about before that, you know, if, if you're gonna find, institute fines, could those fines then be reapplied back, back to the owner to make improvement? So, you know, it's kind of the carrot and the stick a little bit, you know, but knowing that it doesn't make any sense for us to collect money in fines and then, you know, we're just precluding the property owner from, you know, making investments. So ultimately, the goal is to, you know, get that money circulating back into the property. So I think it's something, like I said, I, I think for the, the future viability of our downtown, you know, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of buildings. As, as properties transition out of residential, we need to really push for them to go back to commercial. We lost a ton of our commercial spaces to residential over the years. So that makes it very tough. You know, the opportunity to build more in the downtown is very limited. I think the glass blowing shop is probably the best opportunity that could be demoed. And you have a quarter of a city block that, you know, could be redeveloped.
I don't even know where.
Right on the corner across from Linsrians. Yeah, next to the town square. So that's probably, you know, that would be an easy demo. And, you know, like I said, it's a quarter of a city block at that point that could be redeveloped. So that probably has the most potential to build any type of new economic retail in the future.
The carbon plant's a bigger site too, that could do housing and commercial.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's two acres. And it could tie in really nicely, like I said, with the other properties if it was master planned correctly. So you could have a lot of shared parking, you know, transit, all kinds of things. So, yeah. So I just want, I wanted to keep this one on the radar. Like I said, at some point, the city might need additional tools.
To help keep these from deteriorating further.
Yeah. And I think, you know, it's possible some might be beyond, you know, there's a couple that might be beyond repair. You know, just when you look at the amount of investment it's gonna take, you know, I don't know what's gonna, what really happens at that point.
Eventually, they're gonna get to a point where it's, I would think they're not able to insure them.
I don't think they're insured anyways.
Which means they can't be borrowed against to improve them.
Right. Yeah. So, so on that dreary thought.
Does the public have any comment on the vacant commercial property assessment and ordinance discussion? Okay, it'll be back. We'll, we'll discuss this again. Okay, any other comments? Just, okay. So moving on to item seven, business outreach.
Yeah, so you guys took this on at your last meeting, talking about partnering with the Chamber of Commerce to do some business outreach. We thought it was kind of time again to, everyone maybe kind of divvy up and take a couple of businesses and, you know, go and talk to them about how things are going. You know, what do they see as what their needs are? What are some barriers to their success? What are some ways that they see that the city can provide any sort of assistance? Just to, you know, kind of get a feel for what the economic climate is right now with our businesses.
Do we have a list of who's got a business license that we can share with the council or the commission?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I think you're really talking more like your brick and mortar businesses. That kind of narrows it down. You know, to start out with. I know the Chamber of Commerce, Justin and the Chamber have started doing this as well. And so, you know, we were like, well, we don't want to really like badger them and have them be like, my gosh, like, they got Justin knocking. Everyone's so interested. But looking at ways to partner with the Chamber as well, just to, you know, let the businesses know too that you know, the city doesn't have a lot of resources, but, you know, we are.
That are beyond the city that they maybe could have access to, state, county, federal and other.
And, you know, if we, if we know more about what the needs are or where things are trending, you know, it's easier for staff also to help do some outreach and maybe connect people with resources. Taylor, maybe some training, some collective discussions, workshops. I think the, the winter is a great time to do that for businesses. You know, there's, there's things that we could, if we, if we have a better understanding, there's, you know, resources that we can bring that, you know, could provide some level of benefit to our business community as well. And there may be just stuff happening that we're just totally unaware of.
Maybe tie it in to businesses that are already here with the community so that we're aware of what other opportunities there are to shop.
Absolutely.
Super local and support very local businesses.
Yeah, for sure. I think there's not so many businesses that we can't, you know, have more of a personal relationship. And, you know, I think that, you know, we work really closely with most of our businesses and, you know, as much as we can, we try and, you know, especially through Parks and Recreation, you know, we try and make those inroads as much as we can. But, you know, we're not really economic development, you know, focused staff. Even though we've, you know, we've kind of had to insert ourselves into that arena just to, you know, keep our own stuff going, you know, skating and all of that. So it, it has created more of a business-focused climate for us.
Well, the Blue Lake Chamber members have reciprocal membership, I believe, with the Arcata Chamber. And they're getting ready to open a, some sort of center in where Internews used to be in Arcata that will have SB, DC, Cal Poly and probably two or three other alphabet soups in there with the idea of having like a hub where businesses can get some support. I was multitasking during the meeting when that came up, but there'll be more to come on that. And it's something we should probably make sure that the Blue Lake Chamber is very looped in on, if you're not already.
Have you guys started your outreach, Justin?
We have started our outreach. We've already, each one's picked a business. So we have Lager Bar, we have Jewel Distillery, we have Cruisin' Kitchen. And I believe the other one was Kiko's. I think that was the fourth one. So, yeah, we've had, we haven't had their meeting yet, so I haven't heard the reports yet. But I did meet with Jewel Distillery. That, that was mine. Had a, a nice meeting with them. They are very blunt, very straightforward. And I, I'm a very blunt, straightforward person. I really appreciated their, their blunt and straightforwardness. Good people. I, I really like them. I look forward to hearing more from them.
They have two businesses in the operating out of that facility. In addition to Jewel, they've got Lasso Security Cables. It makes a kayak lock. So they're, they've got two in that one space.
Oh, I was unaware of that. Okay, then. Also, since I'm kind of already talking anyway. If any of you guys want to come to a chamber meeting, it's every second Monday at 5:30. So next Monday at 5:30. We would love to have you guys, at least, at least one of you guys show up. And if one of you want to become a board member, I'd be more than happy to approve that.
Are the meetings here or?
They are right here at 5:30 on the second Monday of every month.
And they have a really good group. They've got some new people. They're really taking on a lot of new cast with enthusiasm. And, you know, so I think the Chamber's really doing a great job and just really getting their feet under them. You know, which, which is, will provide a lot of support for our businesses too, you know. And we're all trying to kind of figure this out, like, how do we all, you know, do this together? And how do we connect events to business and, you know, and doing that with a pretty skeleton crew. But I think, you know, with the Chamber's help, you know, those members all represent other businesses as well. And so that's just more people feeding information, making connections, bringing information back. So that's, there's a lot of really good dialogue taking place.
Does the public have any comment on business outreach at this time? Thank you. Okay. Are there any other comments on the ongoing business outreach? Okay. Will we revisit this again? Because it is important. And it's evolving all the time. Okay, so moving on to item eight, the City of Blue Lake project updates discussion, items A and B, Town Square and Powers Creek.
Yeah, so the town square just received power today. We're super excited. We were supposed to receive it in March and we, we begged and pulled in every favor and backdoor call to whoever we all knew in PG&E to get the power turned on early. So, so we now have dedicated power. So that means we can operate the splash pad and we can hook up food trucks and we will have power for the holiday season, which will be great. So we'll have a lit holiday tree. And, yeah, so we're, we're really excited. We had the opening of the splash pad. We did a pop-up water day a couple of weeks ago and it just, it was amazing. We had probably the most beautiful day we've had in Blue Lake for a long time. And we had so many kids and families and community members come out. To experience the splash pad. And we served over 200 servings of ice cream. So we know we had a lot of people. But, yeah, it was super exciting and just really lovely to see, you know, the kids playing and being used and enjoyed by, you know, the community and the families. And, you know, we got all the sod in, so it has a beautiful green lawn. And we installed all that in-house. That was a big undertaking. We did almost 4,000 square feet of sod in a day with Public Works, Parks and Rec, and then city, the rest of the city staff and my son. I roped my son into doing it too. So, so that was good. So the, the park is almost complete. We are gonna be putting up the shade trellis. Old Crows are coordinating that with Schmidt Bauer and North Fork Lumber. They're donating all the lumber and some of the design work. And they're using some specialized milling tools to be able to pre-cut all of the lumber to size. So they're kind of using it as a pilot project as well to kind of showcase some of the new technology that they have. So that's kind of a fun project that we're working with George Schmidt Bauer Jr. on that project and Ken Dunn from North Fork Lumber. So, so that will be kind of the last part to go up. And we hope to have that done. I'm hoping by the end of the month. So, um, so that will be kind of the last part to go up and we hope to have that done, I'm hoping by the end of the month. Um, they seem to, they keep getting a little bit more intricate and, and like, um, with the design. So I'm like, hey, let's just bench this down and get it done. So, but it's been a great project. Um, we'll be installing some additional seating, um, and when we have days where we have food trucks, we'll be able to have, um, different types of, you know, bistro tables and things. So people can sit out and eat and enjoy their lunch and maybe their kids can play in the splash pad or, um, their dogs can run through it. I don't know. Um, so that is, that project is almost complete. Um, the Powers Creek District is, it's just really moving forward in a lot of different ways. I'm really excited. We just wrapped up the EDA grant, um, that did all the master planning work for the RV Park and Campground. Um, and because of that work that we've done, we've received such a huge amount of interest in the Powers Creek District. Um, the Botawatt, uh, mixed-use development project is moving through the secret process. It's almost complete and ready to go to the Planning Commission. Um, our housing element is moving through the secret process and that will be going to the council. Um, I don't know if it goes to October or if we have to take it in November depending upon the thirty-day mark. So those are, um, those projects are moving forward. It's a really amazing design. I'm really happy with, you know, how the considerations that the architect is making, that the developer is making, um, really focused on recreation and creating that connection to space and the creek and the bike park. And, um, just really recognizing that this is such an anchor for Blue Lake and it's really our first big project like this in a really long time. It's been a long time since Blue Lake's built, um, any housing of, um, you know, of size. And, you know, just the thought that this really sets the tone for the rest of the district moving forward. Um, I think they've been really respectful of that. And so I'm really, really grateful to have that, um, that level of commitment. Um, the bike park is, the bike park is, um, just going, uh, amazingly well. We're actually looking right now to pave the jump lines. Um, all the jump lines are in. Um, and we are working with Mercer Fraser, um, RAO Construction and some of our other contractors locally to, um, donate materials. Um, so we need asphalt donations and then RCMBA in partnership with, uh, Wildland Operators and, and some of our other local community members will be, um, can't, basically hand forming the jumps with asphalt. So, um, we're so far beyond where I ever thought this bike park would be. I mean, when we first envisioned it, it was going to be this little, you know, bike park that we were going to be out there with shovels and wheelbarrels. And, you know, people just came forward and were like, this could be something so spectacular. This could really be like the top bike park in the, in Northern California potentially. Um, and it's going to be a huge anchor for Blue Lake. And so with that in mind and that potential and those, um, investments, you know, we, we, you know, expanded a little bit and moved things around and it's really coming together in a way I, I really just had never expected. So a lot of work is being done. A lot of donations have come in. Um, we've spent about eleven thousand dollars so far on the bike park and five of that, five thousand of that was from a PG&E grant. So to have that little amount of money go as far as it has, this is probably like, this could easily be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bike park. Um, you know, so easily. And so I think, um, it just speaks to how recreation is such a driver, um, and is going to just have such a huge benefit. So that's really exciting. Um, there is, we did receive a written offer for the Corporation Yard and that'll be going to council, um, at their upcoming meeting in October, um, to discuss that. That'll be a closed session item because it's property negotiations, but, um,
Get surplused and then?
It already has. Yeah. All of our properties that aren't developed all, every year go through the surplus lands process. That's mandated by the state. Um, and so we've been in, working with the Eisner family and the Kane family for, um, about a year to look at developing the corp yard. And so they, uh, came forward just recently with a written proposal. I think it's a very strong proposal, um, and, um, I'm really, um, happy to see, you know, them continuing to want to invest in Blue Lake. Um, as owners of B and B across the street, um, you know, just seeing, them seeing the vision and, uh, being willing to to make a large-scale investment to go the next step, I think is really exciting. So, um, so that will be going to council. They're also working with a sports, um, development group locally, um, Hit Sports Club. And they are looking to develop the B and B property into an indoor and outdoor sports complex, which I think is, it's like my dream project.
We've seen that in earlier meetings.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so that's all moving forward. In fact, they met today to talk about, um, structuring, whether it's a land purchase or a land lease or a partnership, um, so that's moving forward.
Our whole county could benefit.
Oh, it would be huge.
And that'd be two really simpatico projects out there that would bring.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, lots of, um, you know, just lots of family, lots of, um, you know, people out of their cars, walking, biking, recreating, you know, to have those indoor facilities, especially in this area where, you know, the kids around here, and we don't even get on baseball fields till, you know, sometimes late April, May, you know, with everything being underwater. So, you know, to have indoor training facilities like that where these kids can kind of get that leg up and be competitive because everyone else is training year-round. You know, my son just got done with baseball, you know, on his travel team. And it's, you know, October, so, you know, they're playing eight months out of the year, if not longer. So, um, to be competitive, you need these facilities. And I think Blue Lake's perfectly situated as such a baseball town anyways to be able to take advantage of that and then be able to cross that over with our outdoor recreation facilities as well. So I'm really excited about that project as well. Um, and then the final project is the power plant. Um, we're working with a company right now called Power Transitions to look at a battery storage project. Um, they're really interested. It's one of the projects that we had identified early on when we looked at the master planning was to look at utilizing that, um, that interconnect to somehow continue to be in the energy market, but not have to do, you know, uh, an actual, um, operating plant. And battery storage is, you know, one of the new big focal points because you can produce the energy, but if you have nowhere to send it when you need it, you know, it's a loss. So the real stopgap measure is the battery storage. So, um, and that's what these companies do. They're very benign. They're basically shipping containers, um, full of Tesla walls and you just purchase energy when it's cheap and sell it when it's needed on the grid. And no one knows, um, that it's even there. So we had identified, um, about five acres of the site, um, for energy production or some type of energy scale project, um, in conjunction with master planning the RV Park and Campground. So, um, I'm really excited. This is a, a very well-vested, um, company, has a lot of expertise in this arena. They're very interested in.
What's the company name again?
Uh, Power Transitions. Um, and we're working with RCA as well, um, on this project. Um, RCA, you know, is kind of our energy, um, kind of broker guru, um, of choice. Um, and so we've been working really closely with them as well on kind of facilitating this dialogue. Um, and then we've released the RV Park and Campground project, um, to a couple of companies who work in the hospitality industry that had heard about the project and were really interested to, to look at the project and, and see the numbers. Um, we're getting some pretty solid feedback on that as well. So, um, so yeah, so that's kind of what's going on in the Powers Creek District. Um, oh, and then Jacques is back at the Chocolate Factory. Um, he bought, um, the prior company. He partnered with Sergio, who, um, was one of his, um, employees in the past. And so now they partnered and so we've re-signed the lease with them to keep the chocolate factory going.
Oh.
Yeah, and so we, yeah, yeah. So we talked with Jacques too and Sergio about, you know, pop-up retail days or if there's, you know, opportunities where maybe it's once a month, you know, the community can come down and maybe you have a chocolate sale or some, just to kind of have that, kind of build a little more enthusiasm around retail down there as well. And they said that would be, that would be fine. They could do that. So, um, we're happy to have Jacques and Sergio there and to, um, have that revenue coming back in because we had kind of gotten caught up in the bankruptcy of the former company because our property was there and all the fixed assets. So we've, you know, we lost some revenue on that. So we're happy to have that tenant back and, um, so that was kind of a seamless transition. Um, and that's about all I have for those projects. If you guys have any questions. I was watching the time. I'm like, okay, I can speed through this.
Is there any social media on the, um, the bike track?
Yeah, so we launched a Blue Lake Bike Park Facebook page and I cross, um, promote it to the Blue Lake Happenings page.
Okay.
Um, and actually I just did some posts today, um, because we are doing a fundraiser. So we have, you know, we're constantly, you know, thanking our sponsors and, you know, um, trying to get that out and then cross-promoting that to be like, hey, you know, like, these guys donated, would you like to also? Um, so there's some new stuff. Um, I'm going to be taking some pictures and stuff tomorrow to update because I haven't taken pictures for a while, so.
And what's this, the Facebook page?
Uh, it's just, I think it's Blue Lake Bike Park.
Okay.
And then.
I was at an automotive shop and I was having, there was a conversation with a local Blue Lake person and
Oh.
the guy behind the counter was like, do any of you know about the bike park? It's going to be done. And I was just like, I don't know how to guide you with that. Yeah.
It is insane.
But I have to go back there next week, so I'll tell him.
Yeah, we have had so much support from Redwood Coast Mountain Biking Association and, and we're also partnering with Humboldt Skate Collective because there will also be a half-pipe, um, for the skateboarders as well. So, um, it's all being designed, um, in partnership. So everyone is raising funds and, you know, they've got lots of volunteers. Um, so yeah, it's just, it's been such a great project to bring so many people together.
And then we can have events there.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, it really will be a premier location. I think that there's a whole host of opportunities to have demonstrations and competitions. And yeah, it's, um, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty, pretty large for our region. People travel all over to go to bike parks with their families, you know, it's, and I think down here, especially being able to like, as a parent, be able to just sit out and go let your kid ride at a bike park and you're, you know, whether you're sitting in the sun, reading a book or, you know, having a coffee or having lunch and your kids are in a safe environment and they're just recreating and being able to come across the bridge and you're right in Perrigo Park, like, you know, it's really spectacular. When you think collectively of how much recreation space Blue Lake has, it's really impressive. Um, and, you know, it's just, it's such a great community for that. So it's, um,
It's historic.
It really is.
Has always been historic.
Absolutely.
People who've lived around here have memories of going to the games, basketball.
Skating. Yeah, horses.
Is that maybe a future agenda item, like how to appeal to different recreation segments or is that more of a Parks and Rec thing? I've just been thinking it'd be nice to get bird watchers on, out here because.
You know, I think with the bird watchers, we have, actually have a lot of bird watchers. Um, the biggest area for bird watching is across the bridge. And the city has been trying for years to work with the two property owners to acquire that property. Fish and Wildlife has the finance or the funding available that they could acquire it for the city. Um, we would love to acquire it and manage it and clean it up. Um, we cannot get the property owners to agree. Um, and the problem over there is there are transient camps, um, it's over vegged with invasives. We just had a fire there. We had a fire there last week. Uh, you know, we had a dog attack, uh, you know, a cou- few months ago, a really serious one. So, um, it's become a real nuisance property. And, you know, we continue to try and make those inroads. Fish and Wildlife would love for the city to be the holder of that property because then they recognize the value of the habitat, but also the recreation value.
Well, I think that's a great way to offset some of this loss of open space we have with what's going on over in Powers Creek.
We've been working on it. We, we've been working on it very seriously for years. Um, and like I said, the fundings are, the funding's going to run out soon. Um, and we've been trying to, you know, kind of put that push and hoping that maybe with some of these recent issues that the property owners would be like, hey, it's just too much liability because they're, you know, it's very much a, um, you know, just an absentee landowner. You know, there's no management taking place. You know, it's, the, the land is being, um, you know, impacted by, you know, garbage, by, um, you know, dumping fires, invasives, uh, but it's a beautiful property for recreation. The trails are amazing. I mean, I've used those trails my whole life. My dad used them as a kid. You know, my dad's going to be eighty-two. Um, so.
There are pond back there too.
There's, yeah, there's a pond back there. The trails go all the way to Arcata. Um, so.
Is there any way to, that it could be part of like the nuisance policies?
We've been working with the county, so we have, um, partnered with the county on that. The county did come out and do a nuisance, um, kind of assessment.
It's not.
It's not the city.
I thought it was private. Oh, but it's in the county. It's a small piece of county, a city property over there.
We own a small piece of it, but it's in the county jurisdiction. It's kind of quasi. Kind of, kind of runs across into, yeah. The county would defer that jurisdiction to us and the county would be happy if the city would take it over. Um, we all have the same goal, especially with all the recreation. Like, we need bathrooms, we need better parking, we need safe crossings for people. I mean, when we had those hot days this summer, we had thousands of people down there and it was a cluster. And, you know, oh, it's insane because you have gravel trucks coming through.
Did somebody hit a power pole and start a fire?
Oh, yeah, that was just like two years. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, that's definitely high on our list.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's.
Has amazing bird watching habitat. It has historical, um, oh my gosh, historical cottonwoods, um, that you don't find very often around here anymore. So it's a place where Audubon, their members come out a lot to go birding.
Yeah, I'd like to catch up with them sometime out there.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so is that, that's covered all the things on the, the, the project updates here in item eight?
That's about all I have, I think, yeah.
That's, that's plenty.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot going on.
And it's, you know, big things don't always move fast, but they keep going and these are percolating.
Yeah, yeah. And I, like I said, I'm, I'm always happy that other people see the vision as well. And so I think that just gives, you know, a lot of, um, credence to the direction that the city's been going and all the work that the council's been doing and the rezoning and the thoughtfulness, um, around, you know, the work that's been done, um, that we are attracting investment. And it's, you know, the type of investment we had hoped to attract. So I'm, I'm, like I said, in having people who already own property down there, who are successful business owners wanting to invest more, um, is I think even more of a testament to just the, um, the future success of Blue Lake.
I do have to say something. I drove by when the splash pad.
Oh.
And I, I walked around there. Actually, I got in my car and walked around. It was just one of those special days that you just felt the excitement and seeing the community. Those kids were so.
Oh, they just loved it.
Their little bikini.
Yeah, we shut it down at six o'clock because we had council that night. So I was like, you guys, you gotta be done. Because we had to run it off a generator. So I had to run up. I'm like, you guys have to be done. Like, get your towels. It's getting cold. I want to take this generator. But yeah, they just, oh, they had so much fun all day long.
Yeah, I almost felt like I wanted to put my feet in.
I, yeah.
That could be a little big for us. Birthday party venue now that you've got that.
Yeah.
Power.
Yeah.
So that was memorable.
Yeah, and I think we're the only place in Humboldt County that has a splash pad. So, you know, and, and that's what the grant, you know, the grant wanted the kids to pick a feature, you know, it mandated that the kids have something, um, installed that they wanted. And so I think that's great.
When we sat out there getting ideas, I mean, we sat out there a couple Saturdays and.
Oh, yeah, how many meetings we had.
Had the tables with the post-it notes and everything else and it was great.
Mm hmm.
That was, the kids wanted a water feature.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah, fun stuff.
Does the public have any comment on the Blue Lake's project updates? Well, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for coming.
Bye, thank you.
There's another meeting at six thirty.
Yeah, we gotta get going.
Oh, we've been hustling. Okay, so, um,
when we get to item nine, the Chamber update. So you, your meeting is next week. Is there an update? We kind of gave it to us on your.
Yeah, I kinda, kinda gave you the last months, but I had already given you that guy's last month and I can't give you this month because we haven't had it yet.
But you have invited us and reminded us to.
I have.
Here.
And, um, I actually just sent out the email with all the agenda. We've got a pretty, pretty, uh, healthy agenda this week or this month. I believe there's eight items on the agenda this month. That's one of the bigger ones we've had.
Holiday programming's coming up soon.
Uh, yes, that is one of them.
Okay, well, well, thank you. And we have the more public for updating, um. Okay, so, then we also have item ten here, Parks and Rec Event Schedule Update. Is the holiday programming as discussed?
Yeah, so we're just kind of diving in. You know, we had, um, Medieval Festival last weekend. That took a lot of staff time, but it was amazing. Um, and I know there had been some commentary on some of the social media, apparently that, um, you know, that this should have been a Blue Lake School event and why did Coastal Grove get the blah blah blah. I just wanted to spell all of that. This is a, this is a very collaborative event between Coastal Grove, the City of Blue. The city of Blue Lake, Blue Lake School and a lot of other schools in the county, the Saddle Club, our Archery Club. Um, it's a huge moneymaker for Blake Parks and Recreation. We also did the Bounce House. We make, you know, do really well on that. I heard Blake School did really, really well um, for their eighth grade trip and their P T O. Um, they're heavily involved. Um, it's very much a collective collaborative event. Um, and so. I just wanted to throw that out because I, I, someone had said there was some kind of commentary going back and forth about it and kind of painting it in kind of a. A negative light and I just, you know, the event organizers, Bettina especially, works incredibly hard on this event.
A lot of volunteer hours.
Lots and lots of volunteer hours and um, it was, from everything I've heard, I was in Medford at a baseball tournament. Um, but everything I heard was everything went really well. Um, you know, I had. Two not really complaints, but just, you know, like, hey, next year's um, maybe this type of comments. And otherwise I've just heard nothing but positive. So um, you know, it's a busy weekend for everyone. It's a busy weekend for everyone who lives around the park. Um, I think most people who live around the park though, we recognize that we live around a park and you know, with. You know, parks come happy people and laughing kids and screaming and occasional, yes, people jousting on horses. In, in suits of armor. So.
Lots of cars.
And lots of cars. And you know, we've all learned to kind of deal with that. You know, we, we have, all have our own cones now and people are really respectful. It used to be, you know, you'd come home and your driveways were blocked and, you know, everything, but now it's um, you know, people have gotten, you know. As neighbors, we all, you know, kind of understand how to deal with that. So it's just nice to see our parks being used, to see so many people enjoying Blue Lake. So. You know, for a little bit of impact over a weekend, I think the trade-off is pretty palatable and um, you know. Roxanne, you're right in the middle of it too. And you know, I mean, you just, sometimes you just gotta be like, hey, I can either be part of it and.
It's so warm.
I saw it was, it was really hot, so.
Uh, you know, one of the comment that I had from somebody that actually went down there and was there food down there?
Oh, there was tons of food.
So it was not in the park?
The food was in, by the horse arena. Yeah.
Okay, that's.
And they kind of do that so that they can get everyone paying an entry fee. And the stuff over the park, there's no entry fee. So there, but there was food in the park. I think Casey was here with Cruising Kitchen. The kids were selling pretzels. There were drinks and different things, but the big, I think there was ten food vendors in the horse arena.
Cause I, I would report that back.
Yeah.
Because there was some concern and we were actually thought, thinking at the museum that we might want to have the, the pizza guy.
Oh, mm-hmm.
There maybe.
Yeah, just some overflow.
It's typically the first week in October. It's annually, it's usually when it is.
Yep.
So we were gonna reach out to him because that really does help because he pays us a dollar a pizza, I think, isn't it?
In the past, he's done.
Yeah, he's done that. So.
Oh, wow.
That helps.
But he can't produce them very quickly.
Oh, gotcha.
So there's not.
I don't know.
Might get five dollars, whatever.
Yeah, so um, yeah, so that, like I said, I just wanted to kind of throw that out in case anyone had heard that as a complaint. It's definitely. We all work together. We're all very happy with the event. The school's very happy with the event. And the school traditionally has had Hoptoberfest as their big fundraiser. So. Um, this has always been Coastal Grove's big fundraiser, but Bettina's been very gracious and, and inviting schools to come in and. Um, do what they can to raise money for their own program. So.
Nice. When is Hoptoberfest?
I don't know. Oh, you know what? I heard they're having it at the casino.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
And they're having a Halloween carnival. The school is.
Oh, yeah, we'll have our Halloween carnival. Yeah.
The parking was all in the district. People just walk over the bridge. It was perfect. That district was full of cars.
So what are we gonna do when that gets developed for parking for festivals?
Well, when you have a parking problem, it's a good problem to have, exactly.
It will come up.
And all of, you know, our spaces, I mean, we are developing parking in different spaces and, and cluster parking and things.
Maybe we could have a shuttle from the casino or something.
Would be great. Yeah.
Add that with some events too.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of um, a lot of creative solutions to that, which would be a really great problem to have. So.
And those cars is okay. So the, the fall program, the fall career, there's a Halloween carnival. There's like, you're getting into the skate season.
Yeah, we're really pushing hard into skating. Um, and then we'll go right into holiday, Christmas, Thanksgiving type stuff. Um, last year we did the um, the light parade and then the um, holiday dinner, which was super fun. I hope we do that again.
Oh, my gosh, next month is November.
Yeah, we're thinking about possibly seeing if we could get a barn dance in November. Um, you know, it just, it steamrolls on you so fast. You know, we're like, just coming out of summer and it's like, we gotta be ready for this. And you know, like, it's Emily and Austin over there, you know, and they still gotta go and make sure there's. Dog poop bags in the park. And then it's like, oh my gosh, like all these things, you know, so. You know, it's, it's a lot, you know, for a small community, there's a lot that goes on here. Um, and we have been working really hard to try and. Um, bring in more like um, Gloria Baker and um, Yahira who did the, the block party and stuff, you know, getting. People like that who want to do events and, you know, providing them as much support as we can, but like, letting them take some of that on has been amazing. So. Um, just building those partnerships is really crucial because, you know, we just don't have the capacity to do everything we'd like to do. Um, but we definitely can be advocates and, you know, help in any way. So.
Okay, so that's the update on the Parks and Rec schedule. To be continued. Are there any announcements? Once, twice.
The museum is open through the month of October, Saturdays and Sundays, one, four.
And we had people come in during the medieval.
Oh, good.
We did. And it was, and it was interesting because it's like, I live in Blue Lake and I've never been in there. You know, you get that, but.
Oh, yeah.
It's because we're not open all the time. So I think that's part of it, but it was good to have them educated.
Right. Fun. Were they all dressed up?
I wasn't there, but.
I was there and they came in because it was so hot.
Oh.
By the time they were walking down the trail, they wanted someplace to go into the.
Oh, just to cool off. Oh, wow.
So it was like ninety. You know, air conditioned building or something like that when there's an event. Yeah.
That's what was nice about the park being part of it because there was shade.
Yeah. Yeah, it does. But that's very, isn't that like the medieval way, you know, suffering dusty, dusty, sweaty. Yeah.
Yeah, glistening.
Okay.
Now, do you guys, on, on future agenda items, did you want to go over those? Because I'm not sure.
I think it will be similar to the current agenda.
Yeah, I think these are all good um, kind of holders, you know, as we just kind of continue to have dialogue and. Um, like I said, I think the retail cannabis ordinance, I think it'd be nice to be able to send something to council, maybe in December.
For to send then, just a resolution that says.
I think just maybe um, maybe not necessarily even a recommendation, but just um, you know, information on what the. Uh, commission has found, did their research.
So you needed like a typed up thing?
Yeah, we probably want to, you know, synthesize, um, you know, here are some of the things, you know, that we think are areas of concern. Here are some things that we think.
Took some notes about Lori's concerns and.
Yeah, we, and, and those have been articulated um, a number of times.
We just need to make sure we've.
I think they're more interested in what are other community impacts? What are other communities seeing? And then maybe what are people seeing as maybe future trends? That instead of maybe us being on the backend, are there things that we need to be thinking about to jump, take a leap forward? Um, and whether that's looking at um, you know, some forms of legalization that start to make, you know, certain products more available.
I think there's probably gonna be a limited number of spaces where the property owner is willing to work with that type of business. To begin with, and I don't think they need a huge retail space, but they're gonna have to have some security issues and a land, willing landlord who doesn't have a bank loan.
Depending on how things change in the future with legislation, maybe not so much too, you know? So, I mean, I think they're also seeing like, is it kind of like overkill to have like security guards and all this stuff in some of these places? I don't know, like.
State required.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the state's looking at. Have they placed too much of a burden on business for business to be successful with all? I mean, everyone was so scared of it, like they heaped on every regulation you could think of. Thinking that, you know, you were, everyone needed armed guards and all this stuff, you know, and it's like. But you know, you could go into a liquor store and it's just one person behind the counter. And you know, at some point, it starts to become, you know.
It's a different kind, you're treating it differently. There's like a moralistic of.
They really did. Yeah, yeah. And I think in some areas, maybe it's um, you know, maybe it makes sense if you have more cultivation. And raw product and different things. But if you're just a small retail front.
It's a substance that can be abused too.
Just like alcohol and cigarettes.
And then for, yeah, but we have shrinkage if it's, people are going out of the area for it. Leakage. Alright. Okay, so future agenda items, more of the um.
Retail cannabis.
Retail cannabis. Yeah, we can kind of wrap that up maybe. Okay.
And are there um, any other future agenda items? I think we're, okay, so I guess we're ready to adjourn. Chair will entertain a motion.
All motion that we end the meeting today at. Uh, what is it? Five fifty-seven?
Five fifty-seven.
And I'll second that.
Second and all in favor?
I.
I, we're adjourned.